Upcoming events, I'll let you guys go through that. But three that I want to bring your, note your attention to is the City Council Workshop next Tuesday at 7:00 PM, talk about the beach parking. Then we have council meeting on September 11th. Note that is on Wednesday and not on Tuesday due to the Brevard County Budget Public Hearings. And then City Council Meeting on Monday, September 23rd. Instead of, again, it's not on Tuesday, which is typical due to the budget hearings. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Next is, next is City Attorney's Report. Do you have anything? No report. Okay. Next, next is Council Comments. We'll start with Deputy Mayor Gert.
I had an opportunity, like the rest of our council, to go ahead and go down to the conference in Hollywood, Florida, for the League of Cities. And they always put on a great conference. It's up to date, they bring in great speakers, and of course, we get a chance to visit with all the city people around the state with what problems we have and how everybody's identifying it. I enjoyed it immensely, and I had an opportunity for my wife to go with me, so that made it even better.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Hugh.
Yes, I have some sad news to share tonight. I just wanted to let people know that on August 21st, we lost our first city clerk, Ruth Grigsby. She had a wonderful career with the city of Indian Harbor Beach that began in 1977. She served with her whole heart for 24 years, and I had the great pleasure of working with her. And you couldn't have found a better person who really cared about the city and gave her 100% to the city. I wanted to let people know who may still be, I know the family, that her service is, there's a visitation Friday night from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Life Event Center at Florida Memorial Gardens, and her service will be at 10:00 on Saturday. So I just wanted to, on behalf of the city, extend our heartfelt sympathy to the Grigsby family. The city is a better place because she was part of it for many years, and I wanted to express my sympathy, especially to her sweet daughter, LeAnn, who sang at my husband's funeral back in 1997. So I will always love the Grigsby family. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Dyer.
Yeah, we also, or I also attended the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference as well, and I just want to piggyback on what Frank was saying. It was a great opportunity to, you know, network with other cities and collaborate with them and how they tackle issues, and the keynote speaker was very, very informative as well, and that was just a good opportunity. That was my first time going down there, and looking forward to the next time.
Okay. Okay. Next is public comments on agenda items only. There are a couple of speaker cards here. I know those are for, from a couple of people that want to speak on the noise ordinance item, which is a little later in the agenda. That particular item is a first reading, and by definition, a first reading is not a public hearing. However, if you wish to speak on it, I would encourage you to do so now, rather than at the end of the meeting where it's, we have another public comment segment at the end of the meeting. So if you want to speak on that particular item, if you haven't provided a speaker sheet, please go ahead and fill one out and give it to the city clerk. But, so we have Denise Lambert and Angela Hill. Would you all like to get up and go ahead and have your three minutes of fame? Please state your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Denise Lambert, 123 Lancha Circle, and I'd just like to say, you know, there have been a number of us, you've probably received a number of emails from the residents of Palm Springs condominiums urging you to move the decimal reading to 60 as opposed to 65. Truly, I can hear 65 through my closed hurricane-resistant doors. So it removes my lanai from being used, and I received my tax bill last week, 34% of my taxes goes to Indian Harbor Beach directly, city. So I just am hoping that you all will do the right thing for us, and appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Angela Hill?
Angela Hill, 123 Lancha Circle. I just want to emphasize, I know I sent my email as well. I'm also requesting that we consider removing it from 65 to 60, particularly with, when it comes to amplified music. I feel like we have seen an improvement. However, again, yes, through my closed doors, quite honestly, even 60, I can hear exactly what songs are being sung, the words, and it's not even an obnoxious band or anything. I mean, I, they're not being obnoxious necessarily, but it is intrusive for me. So that's when I, and I'm going out, and that's even at like 60. So I really do have concerns with 65 being the, you know, just that baseline measure for amplified music that's outdoors, that's, you know, close to my home. So I will just, my last call, push for it. Thanks, all. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we go into unfinished business, and the first thing on the agenda under unfinished business is first reading ordinance number 2024-03, which is the revised noise ordinance. This would be to remove from the table ordinance number 2024-03 and approve the first reading, repealing the existing noise ordinance and adopting a revised ordinance. I will read the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number 2024-03, an ordinance of the city of Indian Harbor Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Chapter 8, Article 2, Noise Standards and Regulations, providing for severability, repeal, codification, and an effective date. Chief Butler.
Yes. Just to provide a quick overview, brief overview is kind of how we got to where we're at here today. On May 21st of this year, the City Council held a workshop to review the noise ordinance and to hear citizens' concerns over the allowable noise levels in the city. On June 11th, council reviewed the draft language that was created based upon council direction from the workshop. On July 9th, the City Council identified additional areas of concern and revisions and requested changes to the draft ordinance. On August 13th, City Council reviewed draft or draft language and provided additional changes. These changes were incorporated into the current ordinance as it, as you, as you see it today. The, per Florida State statute, the business impact statement was completed and is attached. It was posted on the city's website. Resolution 757, specifying identifying measurements, measure mythology, will be on the September 11th council agenda, council meeting. FYI, just, if you're wondering why that is, it's, it was not on this agenda. The resolutions take one reading, whereas ordinance revisions require two readings. Staff didn't want to be presumptuous and provide that at this point. Also, for residential, for the residents in attendance and those listening, the city has received several emails on this topic, and they have been included with the council package for your review. Staff recommends that City Council approve first reading of ordinance 2024-03 and repeal the existing ordinance and adopt the revised ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll start with council comments with Mayor Gert.
I have a problem.
Oh, that's correct. I need a motion to remove the item from the table.
Motion to remove the item from the table?
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Hugh, second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor, say in a five by saying aye.
Aye.
Does oppose the same sign. Motion carries for zero. Okay. Now.
Ready to go?
Happy Mayor Gert.
I appreciate the emails that people have sent and that type of thing. When I look at this again in writing, we've got all residential zoning districts at 65 DBA, and we've got all other zoning districts at maximum of 65 DBA. You know, I can't tell you what 65 DBA and 60 is because I don't live over there, and I haven't had the opportunity to go ahead and be the test of any type, which really, that's what it really takes. Instead of just numbers, you really need to be over there and be tested, you know. I do appreciate that people from the condominium stepped up and that type of thing, and tied and tonic, that's for sure. And looking at this, the way I feel right now is all residential zoning districts, as far as I feel, should be at 60, and maximum 55. That's the way I look at it. All other zoning districts are 65, I could go with that, and maximum 60. But I think in a residential area, you know, you've got people that live there, and they bought there, and we're a city that's laid back, that type of thing, and unless somebody can convince me differently with some type of a test or experiment, that's where I'm at. I'm at 60.
So just, just to be clear, you're saying the residential should be 60?
And we, all other zoning districts can be 65.
Okay. Okay.
I think you said 55.
Maximum 65. In other words, the way I look at it right here, okay? All residential zoning districts on this sheet says 65. I'm saying there's a little bit of a difference between all other zoning districts and all residential zoning districts. So I move for 60 in the residential zoning districts, and 55 maximum from 10 to 7. And the 60 would be from 7 to 10. That's what I move, and that's where I'm at. I don't think it should be the same as, all other zoning districts should be the same as residential zoning district. Residential, we have just people that live in residences. That's it.
Okay. So the all other zoning districts maximum would stay at maximum 65? So you've got residential zoning.
Would be, in my.
Would be 60.
Yes.
But then all other zoning districts would be 65?
Correct.
Would be the commercial.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to get that straight.
You got it.
Okay.
But I would also move the 60 from 10:00 at night to 7:00 in the morning to 55. In other words, I wouldn't leave it the same at 7:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night. I would move it down five.
Okay. Now, when you want to move that down by five decibels, would that apply to both the residential zoning districts and all other districts?
All right. In the all other zoning districts, you have it maximum 65, and I'm okay with it at 60 at night.
At night. So the second part of the chart.
Right.
At 60.
The only change I'm making is.
Gotcha.
The residential zoning district.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Just want to be very clear on that. All right. So Councilmember Hugh.
I have gone and heard the sound level, because I didn't feel like I could vote unless I actually heard with my own ears what the residents are experiencing. And I do believe 60 decibels for the residential zoning districts, and it has to be, I mean, that would be the maximum, in my opinion, because, yes, you can still hear the music, you can hear everything, but it's not unbearable. And I do feel that our homes are our sanctuary, and we need to be able to come home to peace and quiet, go listen to music when it's, when you want to and enjoy it. But when you come home, you should have the sanctity of your peace and harmony of your home. So I feel it is important to lower it to the 60 decibels, and I think that is an important aspect of this. I was, and I agree with Councilmember Gert about lowering it down to 55 during the evening hours, because when I've been reading through this many, many, many times, when you look on that same page about loading and unloading of boxes, it's on page 13, item 3, it says that that cannot exceed 55 decibels between the hours of 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So if loading and unloading has a 55 decibel rating between those evening hours, then I definitely feel like the residential and other zoning districts should be 55 as well. Otherwise, it's a conflict. It's just something that I noticed, and because 55 is, is mentioned for domestic power tools and other items, so. But otherwise, I think our ordinance is looking good. Everybody's spent a lot of time on it, and I think we're really close.
So Shawna, just to be clear, I want to make sure we've got everybody's input here accurate, accurately. So you would like to see the maximum under the amplified sound reduced down to 60, is that correct, during college business hours, if you will, up until the 10:00 or whatever the timeframe is? 10:00, yes.
Right.
10:00 in the evening timeframe.
Right, in item 6. And I also agree with the chart that Deputy Mayor Gert was mentioning. I concur with his ideas on that as well.
For the, for the evening into the morning?
Yes, the.
For the 55?
The daytime is 60 and 55 at night.
Okay. So, okay, got you. All right. Just want to make sure I got that right. All right. Councilmember Dyer.
Thank you, guys, for coming and continuing to help work, work through this issue, and hopefully, we get a result soon for you guys. I'm cautious of lowering it to 60, and be, just, just for some examples, like, you know, normal conversation is like the 50 to 60 decibel level, vacuum cleaner is like the 70 decibel level, and a coffee grinder could be 70 to 80. I think 60 during the day and 55 might be a little too low, so I, I think I'd, I'd prefer to keep it at 65 and 60, just because, you know, to keep it easily enforceable and interpretable for the police department as well. So I would like to keep it like it is.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
Thank you. Just so everybody understands, and I'm sure you do, the chart part of this just sets a base for everything. The rest of those on page 13 and over to 14 are exceptions to the, to the standard. So, for instance, air conditioners, if you were to leave it that all residential has to be 60 and 55, most air conditioners will violate that. They will, during the day. That's why we put them at 75 in that special category. So, and I'm not suggesting any input on the sound level. We, staff doesn't care, it's up to y'all, but same with the pool in a jacuzzi. We have it set at 75 in the specific criteria, but if you don't do that, every pool in jacuzzi is going to violate the 60 DBA maximum level between 7 and 10.
All right.
So that's why that chart has that baseline 65 and 60, okay? You know, for, for instance, in the instance that Shawna brought up at the last meeting where her son was, you know, playing music loudly, there's no specific criteria under subsection B for that. That would fall under the 65, 60, okay? But if someone's complaining about a loud jacuzzi, now, we know, you know, the houses are right next to each other, you know, if we did a 65 DBA for that, nobody could run their AC. It's just, it can't happen. That's why we put it down at 6, at 75 under the specific sections. Now, we drop down to sub-paragraph 6 on the amplified sound, and maybe that's where we need to think about changing the number, if, if that's what the council wants to do. It's already set at 55 DBAs between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM, okay? So that's less than what we have on the chart up above. The only issue I see here is whether or not the council wants to entertain a 60 or 65 DBA for amplified sound between the hours of 8:00 and 10:00 PM.
Right.
So I would highly recommend we don't change the upper chart. We drop down and focus on the amplified sound on, on, on page 13, number 6. That's just my thought, and that's how staff crafted the ordinance, was to create a baseline, and then these other things will be exceptions. As, you know, as we said, we dropped down to 55 on the amplified sound between, you know, the late hours, and at least what we thought we were doing, consistent with the council's determination at the last meeting, setting the 65 DBAs between, you know, 8 and 10. So.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, that's kind of the way I was thinking of it, was leave the chart alone, and then, not that we couldn't discuss the chart or any of the other components, but it seems like the focus is on amplified sound. You know, at this, at this point, I'm, I'm good with the ordinance the way it's written, both the chart and the item 6, amplified sound. So that's my input on that.
I would like to say that, I wanted to clarify that between the hours of 10:00 at night and 7:00 in the morning, I see a lot of it say like 55 for the loading and unloading and things of that nature. Do we have, between the hours of 10:00 and 8:00, like right now, I believe places have to stop playing music at 10:00, correct? Okay, great. So.
Let me chime in on that. The second sentence under item 6, using or operating for any purpose any amplified sound between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM of any day is prohibited if it exceeds a maximum of 55 DBA. So that begs the question, you know, to Shawna's point, should that simply be cut off amplified sound after 10:00 PM? And, and, you know, for the purposes, keeping in mind, this is just for amplified sound, I would not have a problem with, with that line being removed or just it being edited to basically state, "Using or operating for any purposes any amplified sound between the hours of 10:00 PM and 8:00 AM is prohibited."
Period.
Period.
That way, we don't have somebody playing at midnight at 50 DBA or 55 DBA. We avoid that issue, and I don't, you know, I don't see a need for amplified sound after 10:00 anyway. So that's, again, revised input.
And again, for the amplified sound, I would like to go with the 60 decibels. I wouldn't like to accept it. I, I couldn't vote to accept it at 65. With the na for me.
All right. And we have everyone's input, we received everyone's emails. We understand what the position is of a lot of people. So at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Um.
And that could, and that could be, of course, the ordinance as is. It could be ordinance with the modification I talked about in item 6. It could be other modifications to any item for that matter.
I would like to make a motion that we approve this ordinance as amended to reflect a 60 decibel level in item number 6, with the change where we cut out the whole 55 decibels at that level, and I would vote a move to approve this ordinance if those recommendations were included or part of it.
So just to be clear, that is, would be changing per the item I suggested for item 6, by deleting the second portion of the, of that second sentence, and then Ms. Hugh is wanting to change the maximum DBA from 65 to 60? Under paragraph 6?
Yes.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So you're, you're good with lowering the amplified music maximum sound from 65 to 60?
Oh, no, no, no. I was seconding.
That's why, that's why I keep, I'm just, no, that's exactly what I'm trying to keep repeating, is I want to make sure everybody knows what they're voting on and all that, so.
No, no, I do not want to.
Okay. So what, do you want to rescind your second?
Yes.
All right. So we still have a motion. Do I have a second? Hearing none, the motion dies. I would entertain another motion.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the ordinance as is with the, the changes that we spoke about, paragraph 6 on page 13, striking amplified noise after the 10:00 PM timeframe.
Specifically, it's striking the.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
We're going from 65 to 60?
No.
No.
Leaving, leaving the decimal level the same on paragraph 6, and we're editing the second sentence.
Sound between 60 stays. This gets stricken is what he's doing.
That would be after 10:00 PM. Let's just strike that out of there. In other words, no amplified sound allowed. After 10:00. But it's leaving the decimal level as it's written in paragraph 6.
Let me remind the council, of course, that if in four, five, six months, this doesn't work out, we can come back and revisit all this stuff. Nothing prevents that. But just for clarification purposes, so Mr. Dyer's motion is to approve the ordinance with the following revision to paragraph 6 on page 13 by removing if it exceeds a maximum of 55 DBA. He's leaving the level at 65 during the hours of 8 to 10, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and basically prohibiting basically any amplified music after 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM.
Yes. That's where residential, so all other zoning districts.
Yes.
That's where residential, so, all other zoning districts, where?
It, it, it is anywhere.
Amplified sound.
It's amplified sound.
Amplified sound.
I really just want to make one more comment, just, have you been there to hear it from the balcony?
Shawna, can we, we need to let Frank...
So we're going to 60?
No, that's not the motion. The motion is to leave the decibel level the same. So the first sentence on item six is to leave it at 65 for amplified sound.
Right.
And then the only thing that would change...
And I have no comment.
We're looking for a second, that's all we're looking for.
I have no comment.
Okay, that's my second. No comment. Okay? That's not a second.
So that's not a second?
No, it's no comment, nothing, not a second.
Okay, thanks. That makes it clear.
So I just would like to say that, like, like the attorney said, at least we can get some direction so we can move forward from this and then evaluate if it is working, and then we could always revisit it in a couple of months, but going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, I think this has been on the agenda for far too long.
Um, Carl?
Yes, sir.
Can I pass the gavel?
Yes, you can.
All right, I'm going to pass the gavel to Deputy Mayor Gerton, and I will second the motion.
So, Mr. Gerton, you're running this portion of the meeting right now.
So you have a motion and a second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
No. Shawna was in nay. Motion fails. This is a tie vote.
Tie vote, right, tie vote, okay.
Page gavel. Anyone else want to make another motion?
The motion was by Councilman Dyer, the second was by Mayor...
Right.
The vote was two to two.
Mm-hmm.
Who opposed besides Councilman...
Mr. Gerton.
I do have a comment before we proceed. I just, I have to say that unless you have been there to hear it from the balcony, you do not understand. There is a big difference between 60 and 65 decibels. 60 would be the absolute max, that if it were your home and you were trying to sleep, you would support 60 decibels. I really feel that Indian Harbor Beach is a residential community, and, um, people deserve peace and quiet in their home, and, um, and I have personally spent several evenings listening from the different balconies and inside their homes with the doors closed. So, I 100% support the homeowners there at Palm Springs condominiums. They deserve their peace and quiet, and I just feel strongly on this, and so I would like to make a motion again that we approve this ordinance on first reading with the change of 60 decibels and the other, you know, cutting off the other part of it, we're 55 after hours, but I, I feel very strongly that we are here for our citizens. Thank you. That's my motion.
Good. Mayor, before, can I have some conversation?
Sure, we have a motion, I'm looking for a second, but we can certainly...
Uh, okay. And, and we're on that, is, it's residential district, and I think we need to go ahead and solve that problem first before we move on somewhere else, and right now it's at 65 and 60, you know, at night, you know, after 10:00. And it's different in all other zoning districts, which is 65 and 60, so my mentality is, let's solve the residential zoning district, okay? And if you think 65 is fine there, I don't, I think 60 is fine, and 55 after 10 o'clock at night. Then we can move on down to amplified sound, but I think we're ignoring our residential zoning district when we leave it at 65 and 60.
I think Carl was trying to point out on that, he cautioned us against, potentially against changing that, because you have your everyday equipment that, that you have, your neighbor has, which is air conditioning units and, and other types of things that are right next to your neighbors, sometimes in quite close proximity, that are going to violate that ordinance if that, if that decibel level is lower, because they're running all the time, especially in Florida. So I think his point was that everybody's going to be violating the ordinance there. Um, you know, it's great if you've got a brand-new air conditioning system and it's whisper-quiet and all that, but not everybody has that. Some have older units that are much more, much louder, you have pool pumps that are running. Um, I mean, my neighbor's pool pump is, is quite loud. So, I think that was his point about cautioning us against changing that, that chart that deals with the residential zoning districts.
I would like to comment that I agree with Deputy Mayor Gerton on the chart, though, because the, um, the specific changes in items on page 13, we do have it noted about air conditioners being 75, that that's an okay level. Pool and Jacuzzi equipment is 75, loading and unloading. So it goes on to specifically address those issues. So I do agree with Deputy Mayor Gerton about changing the chart up top to 60 and 55.
So like I said earlier, normal conversation is around the 50 to 60, you know, decibel level. Um, you know, I don't know if anybody else has kids, but I don't know anytime they actually use a normal conversation level. Uh, I'm just cautious of setting that cap so low, and then that could potentially create more issues. I think the, the, the issue that we're trying to address with this noise ordinance is the amplified, amplified noise, and I think that's what, that's what we're going to do in, in my motion, and I'm just trying to get something resolved, and then we can reevaluate moving forward. So, that's my input. Give some direction to our, to our police officers.
Ms. Hume has made a motion. Need a second. If none, then it fails, and it dies.
Okay, well, repeat that motion.
Okay, I made a motion that we accept on first reading this ordinance with the provision of amplified sound with the maximum level of 60 DBAs for amplified sound, and then to, uh, cut off that last portion for the hours.
Okay, so you're not talking about the residential zoning districts specifically?
No, we're just, just, um, item number six with the amplified sound.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion, and do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Hume, a second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Aye.
Nay.
Well, same thing.
Aye, aye for nay. I'm against it.
All right, so, motion fails. Two to.
Do you have some direction for staff that you would like to see something different?
We may have, have to table this till we get, um, Councilmember Boone back on board.
To you guys.
I feel this is too important to not do it properly.
And, I, I, you know, I feel like that we're just picking a number out, and we're going to wait another month or something till people complain or no complaint and come in? Uh, you know, if we got a chart there, let's get the chart right, or let's go down and have a little group, you know, with our meter reader, that type of thing, and have a little workshop down there, and come back, and we could all be on the same page. But just to pick out a number to see if you're going to enforce it or not enforce it, you know, I don't think that's the way to go.
Because our current ordinance right now, with two complaints from citizens, they are being ticketed and written citations. It is being enforced now, our old ordinance that's in effect, and they are paying fines.
And, and the other comment, listen to you, uh, you know, I think our citizens that came in, they were very reasonable.
Yes.
Uh, that's what I think, and, uh, and so the 65 to 60 residential area is not a big deal, and if it's, we think it's a big deal, there's nobody complaining, or, okay, then you could up it if you want to. You can go the other way, you know? Why do we need to start here and then try to bring it down? Let's start here, and then if we need to go up, we go up.
Well, you know, to, to Councilmember Dyer's point, you know, he's got kids, my kids are grown now, um, you know, if your family having some kids over and you got a pool and they're playing and, you know, carrying on like kids do, I, I, I have to believe that that will easily exceed a, a 60 DBA level, um, if we were to change that, that chart. So, you get, you get a cranky neighbor that decides they don't want to hear the kids playing and have a good time, and I'm not even talking about amplified sound, I'm talking about just normal noise and normal kids playing, and I, I agree with him on this, that I would be very hesitant to, to reduce that. Um, I don't think that's a good move, I just really do not think that's a good move to change that, that table. And, and if you, and if you couple that with the tightening up of the, call it the warning system, you know, you're, you're, we're going to be issuing tickets potentially to families that are maybe just having some kids over, or having a kid's party or whatever. I just don't think that's a, I don't think that's a good, a good move.
Uh, can I, Chief, uh, you giving out more tickets for noise as far as bands and that type of thing, and then, then you are people playing in the pool?
Yes.
You giving more for noise?
For amplified sound.
Yeah, for amplified sound.
And that's just that I'm not talking about amplified sound, and that this chart does not deal with amplified sound. This has nothing to do with that, just the paragraph six deals with that. That's where I, I want to be careful what we do, talked about this from the beginning, I don't want to create something that's going to have unintended consequences, and I think this would, I think we did this.
And I, and I think that, uh, Mr. Delaying this a week, or two weeks, or three weeks till Mr. Boone gets back, I think it's not a bad idea.
So if that's the, if that's the direction then that any one of us wants to make, then we'd need a motion to table.
I make a motion that we table this for tonight and put it on another agenda, and I would like to request that council members who will be voting will go in person and listen. Otherwise, you can't...
Are you going to set this up?
I'll arrange the party. Um, no, but, um, and...
So I think you can table it, to table it to the next meeting, I think where we need to limit that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Hume to table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So, staff understands this, this is going, I assume, be tabled to the next meeting, and it will be again tabled for first reading. Um, it may not be taken off the table depending on the number of council members. So...
Understood.
To use the phrase, it could be kicked down the road even further.
Totally understand, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
So, and then, like I said, last meeting, um, you know, Councilmember Boone wasn't here, and then after this, it's going to go to a second reading, right? So this problem's going to...
No, it's going to start at first.
It's going to be tabled for another first reading.
And, so tabled, another first reading, and another second reading, so we're not talking about implementation until, for three, four months down the road potentially, right? So I was just trying to get something on there, they've already, we've already revised this multiple times, let's just get something in, in some direction to our city, that's what they're asking.
Councilmember Dyer, we already do have a noise ordinance in effect that is being supported right now.
That we, that we modified to address these issues.
That we are trying to modify to make some little tweaks to it, but we do have an ordinance in effect right this minute.
Well, I don't, I don't see us getting over the hump on this tonight, and we, we seem to be deadlocked. Um, you know, I, I, I think that, so you're also looking, would be looking for council direction to staff. So if we can come up with some council direction, that's, that's another challenge. Can, can we all agree that the, on paragraph six, through the edit to the second sentence, we're basically prohibiting amplified sound after the hours, after, after 10:00 PM?
Yes.
Yes.
We can make that adjustment then.
That's easy. That's an easy one.
Okay, so I think we're all in agreement on that part. So that's one staff direction there.
And fix that, and then table it for the first reading at a different council meeting.
When we present, when it comes back, we'll, we'll put it on the next agenda, it'll be tabled, we'll revise the ordinance with that particular change, and then y'all can tell us what to do from there.
Okay. Um, so, we had a, we had a vote, and that was three, one, to table, or...
Yeah, I'm against tabling, I want to get it resolved, say, get some sort of direction and move it forward, and then reevaluate, so that's my opinion.
I do two, but I see the writing on the wall tonight, so...
Nothing's going to happen.
That's right.
So, was there a vote?
Motion and a second and a vote. Yep. It was to table, and it was a three to one, and, right, with direction of staff to change that one item. Okay? Okay, on to the next item. Under new business, item number five, this is a public hearing, second reading ordinance number 2024-04, Florida City Gas franchise agreement. This is to have a public hearing and adopt on second reading ordinance number 2024-04, enacting a new 30-year franchise agreement with Florida City Gas. I'll read the ordinance into the record. Ordinance number 2024-04, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Indian Harbor Beach, Florida, approving and granting to Pivotal Utility Holdings, Inc., DBA Florida City Gas, its successors and assigns, a non-exclusive gas franchise, imposing provisions and conditions relating thereto, providing for monthly payment of a franchise fee to the city, providing for audits, identification of city boundaries, forfeiture or revocation, and designated representative, providing a non-waiver provision, providing provisions for a right to enforce entirety in, entirety in governing law, providing for public records, repealing all ordinances in conflict, providing a severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Chief Butler.
Yes, just a little bit of background information, on March 8th, 1994, the city adopted ordinance 94-01, granting the City Gas a 30-year non-exclusive franchise agreement to provide high-quality gas services to the city and to allow City Gas limited use of city right-of-ways. Staff approached Florida City Gas, which is a successor to City Gas, in early 2024 to begin negotiating a new franchise agreement. The draft agreement vetted through each party's legal counsel was reached last month. Essentials of the prior agreement are carried forward... Essentials of the prior agreement are carried forward with the new agreement with minor changes. As with the old agreement, ordinance number 2024-04 contains a monthly franchise fee payable to the city of 6% less actual write-offs from the sale, transportation, discretion, and delivery of natural gas to the customers within the city. Business impact estimate was attached and was completed and is posted on the city's website in accordance with Florida state statutes. Staff recommends that the city adopt ordinance 2024, enacting a new 30-year franchise agreement with Florida Gas on second reading.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. I will open it up to a public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak on this item, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2024-04, enacting a new 30-year franchise agreement with Florida City Gas on second reading.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Hume, second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, item number six, renewal slash selection of employee insurance for fiscal year 2025. There are three items here. Item A is renew the three Florida Blue plans, paying 100% for employee-only coverage, which is the base plan, 50% of the dependent portion of coverage, and providing a $250 a month opt-out payment estimated at $663,633. Do you want me to go ahead and go through, I can just go ahead and read all three of them, and then we'll discuss?
Yes, we'll vote separately.
Okay, but we'll vote separately, okay. Item B is renew dental insurance coverage through Delta Dental for their Deluxe 300 PPO plan, and continue to pay 100% for employee-only coverage and 75% of dependent coverage at an estimated cost of $43,548.30. Item C is renew vision insurance coverage through Delta Vision for their Deluxe plan, and continue to pay 100% for employee-only coverage and 50% for dependent coverage at an estimated cost of $9,359.22. Chief Butler.
Yes, thank you. The city offers city, just kind of, again, a little background information. The city offers their employees and their dependents three health insurance plans and three dependent coverage options. In fiscal year '24, the city switched to Florida Blue. The fiscal year '25 proposed a budget which contains an 8% increase from the previous year. The city's health insurance broker solicited quotes from Florida Blue, Aetna Signa, and United Health. Florida Blue provided the initial renewal offer, and the city's insurance broker negotiated the attached renewal offer. Aetna Signa and United Health declined to quote, to provide a quote. The attached Florida Blue quotes contain the same benefits as the current plans, so the employees aren't going to lose anything from what they currently have right now. It's the exact same plan. The increase came in at 5.04% to the cost for the city for fiscal year '25, which is actually going to be a savings to the city, because we anticipate it as you heard, an 8% increase. Due to the structure of the existing health insurance plans, the city pays 100% of the basic plan and provides for employees and 50% of the dependent coverage for the basic plan. The projected cost for the city for this portion of the health insurance is $656,133. As you can see the breakdown, if you have any questions, I can go over it, but it gives us, each employee has the option of three different options. They have the base, which is free to the city employee. If they want the mid-level option, it will cost them, it'll cost them a little bit of money that they have to pay the difference. And then option two, they have to pay the difference. So, those are the different options. And they also have the options for the employee and spouse, employee and children, and then family coverage. There's the stipend instead of employee health insurance. Additionally, as part of the 24 Enhanced Employee Benefit Initiative that council approved, employees electing no coverage who can document another source of group health insurance will receive a $250 a month stipend instead of insurance. The projected for fiscal year '25 is 2.5 employees selecting this option at a cost of $7,500. This will also have a savings to the city. And staff recommends that the city renew the three Florida Blue plans, providing 100% for employee-only coverage, the base plan, and 50% of the dependent portion of the coverage, and providing a $250 a month opt-out stipend estimated at $663,633.
Okay, thank you. So, that was for item A, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, council questions or discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So, this is just renewing the current plan that we're currently having, right?
Yes, sir.
And this is just for item A, six A?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, for item A, to renew the three Florida Blue plans, paying 100% for employee-only coverage, base plan, 50% of the dependent portion of coverage, and providing a $250 a month opt-out payment estimated at that value.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Dyer, a second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Okay, in reference to the dental insurance, in fiscal year '23, the city switched providers from Delta Dental to their Deluxe 300 PPO plan, paying 100% for the employee premiums and 75% of the dependent premiums. The fiscal year proposed budget was $48,882. Since Delta Dental's renewal quotes include a 0% increase, most employees are satisfied with their coverage. Staff did not request alternative quotes. Hence, staff recommends that the city council renew Delta Dental Insurance coverage through Delta Dental for their Deluxe 300 PPO plan, and continue to pay 100% of the employee-only coverage and 75% of the dependent coverage at an estimated cost of $43,548.30.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions concerning item B?
Motion to approve to renew the dental insurance coverage through Delta Dental for their Deluxe 300 PPO plan, and continue to pay 100% for employee-only coverage and 70%, 75% of dependent coverage at an estimated cost of $43,548.30.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hume, second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Okay, for the vision insurance, in fiscal year '24, the city switched providers to Delta Vision Deluxe Plan with the city. The fiscal year proposed budget is $9,658. Since Delta Vision's renewal quote includes a 0% increase, and most employees are satisfied with their coverage, staff did not request any alternative quotes. Hence, staff recommends that the city council renew vision, division, insurance coverage through Delta Vision for their Deluxe plan, and continue to pay 100% for the employee-only coverage and 50% for the dependent care coverage at an estimated cost of $9,359.22.
Okay, does anyone in council have any questions or comments?
Motion to renew vision insurance coverage through Delta Vision for their Deluxe plan, and continue to pay 100% for employee-only coverage and 50% for dependent coverage at an estimated cost of $9,359.22.
Second.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton, and a second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Next is public forum, anyone from the audience?
I've got one other thing to go over real quick. I'm sorry. The flexible spending accounts. In December '23, the IRS announced that the 2024 annual limit for flexible spending account, FSA, contributions would increase from $3,050 to $3,200. Staff recommends that city council approve the increase of the optional FSA to a 32, maximum of $3,200.
Motion to approve the increase of the optional FSA maximum to $3,200.
Second.
I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton, second by Councilmember Hume. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. Next is public forum, anybody in the audience wish to come up and speak? Please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Denise Lambert, 123 Lancha Circle. If the police can monitor at 65 dBAs, then they can monitor at 60. And I can tell you, if it's at 60, I'm not even saying that I'm happy with that, but I'm willing to do it. That's my concession. So, and if it's at 65, chief, I think that you can plan on having more complaints, and then we're going to be using more police resources simply for amplified sound. I'm not talking about kids playing in a pool. We had kids screaming at our pool this weekend. No one cared. This is about amplified sound. And I would welcome any of you to come to my line, whether it is one by one, or whether you're in a group. But I can tell you, when they do, I think they're doing like an open-mic night, it's not just the 65 or 66, it's the spikes. So, it's ridiculous. And again, I just cannot implore you enough to do the right thing. You're not living there, and I don't know what your complaint is about 60, when you're not the ones living there.
Thank you.
So, one thing, if I can add just one thing real quick. As far as the noise complaints go, as far as the police department goes, it requires a complaint from a citizen. The police cannot be the victim of loud noise, if you would. It actually requires someone to call in and say, "I believe that is loud, and I believe that is excessive. We just can't be driving down the road and hear something and be the victim," if you would. So, it does require a complaint, a complaint, okay?
I understand. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton, second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero, or adjourn.